Good to be here. How many days till Christmas?
All right, let's do roll call.
Let's.
Supervisor Wilson?
Presentee.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning.
Supervisor Royal?
Here.
Supervisor Madrone?
Present.
Chair Bone?
We.
All are here.
Let's salute our wonderful flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Modifications?
Good morning, Chair Bone. There are a couple modifications today. Item D-19 is going to be pulled from consent and will be heard as a public hearing following item H-1. And for the situational awareness of the audience, the intent of staff is to continue these items. Also, just clerical update to item G-3, the negotiations team should be referenced as myself, Jack O'Han-- or, excuse me, Zach O'Hannon and Jack Hughes as the full negotiation team. So I would like to make that modification as well.
So we didn't pull a bunch of people out of retirement to handle that?
We sure did not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trev Lin. Not Trev. Already got schooled on that. Come on up here. They're gonna pick on ya.
What kind of coffee? Like, just medium or... And then maybe two cans this time, so I don't think I only got one. Okay.
Somebody called in for you, Trev. We have a resolution of the Board of Supervisors with one minor correction, I have found out. She's retiring after more than 29 years because there was extra help time and actually there should be a 10% for working here added on too, so. Anyway. Whereas Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, Child Welfare Services, Social Worker Supervisor 2 Trev Lin Blood is retiring after more than 29 years with the county. Trev Lin was hired as a Social Worker 1 in 1998, ultimately becoming a Social Worker Supervisor 2 in 2014. Trev Lin has coached and mentored numerous CWS social workers and administrators in doing child welfare work, especially in permanently planning place and youth in long-term foster care. Whereas one coworker described her as "someone who always provided a safe, fun, and beautiful place for children," and many others to find a place of solace and happiness. And whereas a colleague said Trev Lin is a role model and a friend and said, "I have learned so much about how to engage with clients, create genuine and positive helping connections, and have patience and tenacity in this challenging work of supporting positive change in people's lives." Whereas another coworker said, "I will always appreciate Trev Lin's unwavering support of older youth in foster care. She prioritizes family connections and natural supports and works so hard to find strength for them for the longer haul, the youth will have foster care. I appreciate her straight-talking manner, her willingness to share her ideas, and above all, her commitment to the CWS team and the youth and families we serve." Whereas a longtime colleague summed Trev Lin up like this, "She remained hopeful even when so many stories are sad and tragic. This is the sign of a lifer in CWS work, to reign just as hopeful when you end your career as when you started." I like that. "Her drive to help has never wavered. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes, honors, and expresses our gratitude for Trev Lin's years of dedication to the county and community, and wish her a long and happy retirement."
Thank you.
It's tough. I'd just like to say that it has been a career worth having, that I never planned to be a social worker. Social work found me. All these folks here are part of my family and will continue to be. This community has worked very hard to support our families and heal our community, and I hope to continue doing that from the community. So thank you so much for this honor, and I appreciate you all. Keep up the good work. Take care of my family.
Can we do a public comment now?
Yeah, I'm gonna let you guys.
Good morning. I'm Allison Punksvot, one of the program managers. So I just want to thank the board, the county, and DHHS for recognizing Trev Lin and the decade and a half that I have worked at Child Welfare. Trev Lin has been there. Her zeal for the inclusion of youth in family voice has remained steady. She has worked in many programs with many colleagues, tribes, resource parents, and community partners. She's a natural helper and a mentor. To me, it's amazing that for the two and a half-plus decades that she served, her love and care for the work has never waned. Her commitment towards keeping youth and family connected to culture, community, and their kid remains steadfast. In a field where the work is deeply complex, consequential, and meaningful, she has continued to share the joy of the work. I know her sunset from the county is not a goodbye, just an opportunity for her to serve the community in a different way. I am grateful for the privilege and honor to have worked alongside Trev Lin. Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you. Yes, Beck just kind of steps in and starts pushing you around. Trev Lin, are you retired yet? Because she can't push you around anymore.
Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I'm glad I made it in time. I recently got to take part with Trev Lin in a get-to-know-you panel. The first question was, "How long have you worked for Child Welfare?" And I said, "I started in 1997." And Trev said, "I started in 1998." And we did this back and forth through the questions. It was almost like it was made to happen because it was so wonderful. I didn't get to hear the resolution, but I did, you know, everything that's in that resolution is so true. And I wish that we had, you know, hundreds of clones of humans like Trev Lin. She supports our youth so well, and especially the teens that are unfortunately in our system for a long time. So I just want to thank you. And I do hear that there are some exciting things that might happen in the future with Trev Lin in a different role. So I just wish you all the best. So thank you so much.
Sounds like you got Connie to run, too.
I was instructed I had to stay up here.
Hi, I'm Ivy Brine. I'm a deputy director for Child Welfare Services. Trev Lin has been an inspiration. I know Roald Waller was included in the proclamation, but she truly has been an inspiration to everyone who works at Child Welfare. She is extremely gifted and skilled in communication. There are many times that I hear of situations that were potentially escalating with the youth, and I often hear Trev Lin stepped in. Trev Lin was able to calm the situation down. She has an incredible knack for being real, for being caring. Just, I mean, she is, you know, the life of Child Welfare. She is irreplaceable. We are going to have a huge hole without her, and it is so wonderful to know that she is not leaving our community. She is not leaving the community of working with foster youth. And, I mean, 29 years. I mean, gee, Merry Christmas. That is, that's a testament. And all in Child Welfare. It's incredible. So thank you so much, Trev.
All right, well. I knew if we didn't shut the gate.
Sorry. Michelle Stevens, Assistant Director for Health and Human Services. I was a baby social worker 18 years ago when I started at Child Welfare, and Trev Lin was a huge mentor for me. And when I became the program manager for permanency planning program, she taught me a crazy amount. I learned so much about what it means for kids growing up in the foster care system without a permanent plan, and how you can see reunification 10, 12, 15 years later. And it's pretty remarkable. So I just thank you for teaching me that and everything you've done for our county and for the community. And I'm so excited for you to be retired. And that you're gonna be around. So, thank you.
Thank you. So you guys can also roast her if you want. How about if we give her what? It's exciting. It sounds like you're gonna, the ghost of Trev Lin passed is gonna come back. I don't want to say honest, but you're gonna be around, it sounds like, a little bit. And that's exciting for everything you've done for Child Welfare Services. So I'll bring it to the board, because they all want to say thank you.
Just that, thank you. It sounds like you've been an incredible mentor to so many people. And I'm so grateful that, you know, we have a wonderful team to carry the work forward. It's incredibly important work. I don't have to tell you that. I'm so grateful that you've been there for so many years, helping people steer through some really difficult chapters of their lives.
Hang on. Thank you for your dedication. Keep it short and sweet. Thank you.
Well, I'll echo that and just say that the work is very difficult. And to have a career that long as a social worker is quite amazing. And as I can tell, your coworkers are going to miss you. But also Humboldt County youth is going to miss you. Good luck on your future.
Thank you.
All right.
Got some fabric.
I'll associate you exactly.
He knows what I'm gonna say already, as many of you have heard me say many times. It's just the menders, right, of the fabric of our society. Just really, it takes a lot. People ask us, our job here, and I just basically, most of the job is keeping the wheels on the bus of civil society and keeping it rolling forward. And so much of that is the dedication and work of folks like you and many others. And it's a lifetime commitment for many people. And that's not a bad thing. It's really, and we need to celebrate when we take our next chapter. And, yeah, holding it together, mending those spots that are just, that are hard for us in this community. And I just want to celebrate the creativity of that and the inspiration of that internally and externally. So thank you so much.
All right. One last hand, and we'll send you all back to work. How about that? Is there any discussion on the consent calendar from anybody on the board?
Thank you. Just would like to say thank you to Nazine for her service on, or their service on, the Human Rights Commission.
Anybody else?
Thank you. I was gonna do the same, but I'll also appreciate Oscar Malgoyon for serving on the Behavioral Health Board. Both of them have contributed a lot.
All right. With that, I'll open it up to public comment.
Chair Bone, I have one on Zoom. Caller 7718. I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Kev Sivatsky calling from, uh, here in the city of Mexico. Hope you can hear me today. I wish to comment on item D-7 on consent, the certification November 5th ballot. I really wish to thank and have a great amount of thanks that all of us have shown to Juan Fabo there, and the wonderful job the Election Department has done on this. This is an interesting election cycle, and if you look at the stats there, cities like Blue Lake have a turnout of 81% of their school boarding, and Juan Fabo reflected that. 83.67% of the people turning out to vote for the candidate for city council. I did wish to apologize to Juan because of a comment that was made, hopefully soon to be ex-mayor contacted Juan Fabo according to an article. And Joan shared with him some concerns she had regarding people who have kept out the select living outside of city limits. But Sivatsky confirmed to her that all county votes have been verified. And it just seems to me when people aren't winning these days, they seem to act as if the election's been stolen, something's been rigged. And for anybody who does make those assertions, I'd also have some names since they seem to have that perception. So anyway, thank you, Juan, and thanks for the election, and it's a good thing to have that certified. Tonight at 6:30 at Blue Lake, I guess the city's gonna be based on the final one of those, as far as the third state county council. And if any of you had a chance to attend, I highly recommend you do, as far as part of the property. Thanks again, Juan, and the Election Department.
Thank you. Any, wanted to have something?
Yeah, I'll be really brief. This is an interesting election. They seem to get more difficult every time. We had a couple of new firsts this time around, some interesting, some sad. We had our first tie, I think, in a very long time. The Blue Lake City Council has a tie for third place. We got our first bomb threat during the administration of the election. And so we're kind of entering into rough times where a job that's usually very clerical is turning into something else. However, we got through it, and we got through it really effectively. And it's all because of the people involved in administering these elections. You all worked election night, and I'm very grateful for it. We had other departments that just went above and beyond to make sure that everything worked out well. The Sheriff's Office always gives us a big hand bringing in ballots from our far reaches. They also, I don't know if you all heard, but there was a Cal Matters article regarding disenfranchisement in our jail system. I can wholeheartedly say that is not the case in Humboldt County. Bryce Arnold, who works for him, coordinated with me on a regular basis. She was in our office bringing last-minute provisional ballots from the jail right up until the end of, the closing of the polls. Catherine Lorenzo from HR, these are just a few people that just really stepped up. Her and her team really pivoted when it came to orientation, which was a really sore spot in terms of the big ask that we do for HR. We go from an office of eight to an office of 160-plus people. And they were able to learn along the way, pivot, and really do that efficiently. That saved a lot of money for the county. A lot of folks didn't have to sit around waiting to do paperwork. And so, yeah, I just kind of wanted to acknowledge some of those folks and the fact that this takes a community to make happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
For you. I'm curious, and I've heard other people ask the same question. What happens with the tie?
So state law dictates what we do with it. State law dictates what they do with it. I provided results, and at this point, it's up to their city clerk to move the ball forward from there. State law has two kind of options. One of them's runoff election, and the other one's drawing lots. The runoff election, as far as I understand the law, is only an option if the legislative body had already taken action towards that prior to the election commencing. So if they'd had an ordinance that said they resolved ties via runoff, then that would be an option. My understanding, and I'm not a lawyer, is that it's gonna be, it's gonna be drawing lots, whether that's names into a hat, flipping a coin, you know, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll bring it back.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second. Been moved and seconded? Mr. Wilson. Supervisor Wilson.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Motion carries 5-0.
We will go to Mr. Ford. What's that? I think it's the end of the agenda. It's the end of the agenda. That was at the request of another supervisor. Mr. Ford. We have time sets, but we're not. Cut me out alive. Which, did one of the, I didn't think the consent got pulled. No, but we're going to, we have time sets.
He's not on there.
No, but doesn't he? Oh, we're moving to Public Works, I'm sorry. Excuse me, buddy. Doesn't matter. All right. One of you guys.
Good morning. The options before you at this point are two PRDs that unfortunately we had a lack of notice on. So we are requesting that you open the public hearings for those two PRDs and continue them to January 7.
Yeah, we can. Just.
Just to clarify, we're on items.
H-1 and 2.
H-1 and H-2, which are the two public hearings. And Chair Bone, you will need to open those public hearings. And if we could hear them separately to avoid any confusion on those as well. So starting with item H-1 would be preferable.
For clarification, H-1 and D-19, correct?
H-1 and D-19, correct. Yes.
All right.
H-1 being the formation of the Permanent Road Division for the Morgan subdivision.
And then D...
D-19 being the formation of the Permanent Road Division on Washington Terrace subdivision.
All right.
And quick point of clarification, which, what was the date you asked for them to be moved to?
January 7.
January 7.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
Open the public hearing.
Public comment.
And then I'll do public comment on these items?
I have none.
Seeing no public comment. Oh, and I'm doing both items, by the way. We're gonna hear, no, we're gonna do, okay. Public comment on D-19, Permanent Road Division, Washington Terrace subdivision. Any public comment? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to continue D-19 to January 7.
I just did.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yep.
Motion carries 5-0.
Opening the public hearing on H-1, Permanent Road Division, parcel charges for Morgan subdivision, McInnesville?
I'll move.
Is there any, no. Is there any, is there any public comment? Seeing none? Bring it back to the board.
I'll move that the item be changed to, continue to January 7.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yep.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thanks, Tom. Sorry that we had to do that.
It's okay. It was already her, not yours. Ready?
Yep. The next item before you is an ordinance before the board restricting parking in the Oric and Arcata areas, specifically on Dryden Road in Oric and on Jackson Ranch Road in the Arcata bottoms. You'll notice the hours are a bit different. Outside of the coastal zone, we generally go with the 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. Inside the coastal zone, our negotiations with the Coastal Commission, they recommend we go with 12 to 5:00 rather than going with a full permit. We recommend that option. Both of these locations are becoming a drain on county resources through both the Sheriff's Department having to respond to illegal dumping and other activities overnight that are occurring there, and then Public Works having to clean up the messes. These types of ordinances, we've done before, and they seem to be helping us in the long run. So we do recommend approval.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion for staff recommendation.
Second. And thank you for this.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The final item from Public Works is a similar ordinance for railroad drive in the Fields Landing area. This has become a major issue. We've had community meetings out there with the community, with our boat ramp, boat launch, working with the sheriff with significant draw again on resources to keep policing this area. While the sheriff has done a great job at the boat ramp, the road from the community to the boat ramp has now become the issue. And similarly to the other two points, we are recommending a no-parking overnight ordinance to minimize the illegal dumping and other illegal activities that are continuing to occur at this location.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion for staff recommendation. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Royal?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries 5-0.
Chair Bone, I would suggest you take public comment on non-agenda items to fill the last couple minutes before your time set.
I didn't move it. Sure. Our time set's for right now, though. All right. Public comment on non-agenda items? Okay. Come up here, please. Thank you. Put, yeah, where the mic is.
Yeah, you know, I come before the Board of Supervisors because I was part of this Housing First program that came into being in 2015. And in this Housing First program, I found it to be very subjugating, I guess is what you'd say, to people that had subjugating, I guess is what you'd say, to people that had mental health issues, that had physical issues, and that had reasons that they couldn't apply, couldn't do what they needed to do for the people that, the county, the city, and the, well, everything's underneath the county, so HUD, the City of Arcata, and the county. You all went in together to get people off the streets in a brand-new building that, from the very beginning, had issues. And it wasn't that, you know, I was not part of this group, okay? So, I was not part of the Humboldt County Mental Health, I was not part of the, any of these groups in this area. I was standing on my own with my own counselor and coming off the street through some hard situations out of the MAC house. I spent 2015 to 2024 in this complex. I sent letter after letter to the county, to City of Arcata, the problems that they've had in that complex, to include pushing roaches through there, to include encouraging people to pull recyclables, and the list goes on and on, but the main issue was the flooding of the apartments there. And because it was an ongoing mold problem there, their last hurrah was in 2022, where they flooded six apartments and expected people to go out on the street for six months at a time while they decide they're gonna remediate these six apartments. In the interim, I decided I'm not gonna allow them to abuse me anymore, so I said, I'm not paying my rent anymore. I never had a write-up, never had any kind of strike against me, I'm 68 years old. I came in there to help volunteer, to help these people, okay? On top of helping myself, because I had plenty of work with mentally ill people, children, I mean, the list goes on and on. And so, they took me to court, I had to prove that I had disabilities first, that was very demeaning. And then they took me to court after, I said, no more, I'm done, you can evict me. So, I just thought I'd let the county know again, okay, and the cities know again, that what's gone on in this complex by your proxies is not acceptable, and it's against the law in the state of California, and it's against federal law. And I've written up a statement, I guess you have to have nine copies of all of it, for all of you to read, play-by-play, and there's more that goes with it. And I'll say, and I am part of the grand jury now, I worked my way up there to be part of the grand jury, so I could try and help, okay, the people that really need to help. So, that's my op de agenda, and I appreciate you putting me forward so I can go to my grand jury.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service, too. Seeing no one else?
Chair Bone, I have two on Zoom. Caller 7718, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Councilor PM, I did wish to comment on the moving of the comments on consent items to all of a sudden in the middle of the meeting. For people who looked at the agenda, they assumed it would be the last thing on the agenda. I'm hoping that the new chair, he will have either a time certain, let's say 9:30 or something like that, for comments on non-agenda items. Otherwise, people have to end the whole meeting. Probably the last comment I will make on, at this meeting, but I did want to say that. And further again, I'd like to invite people out to Du Lake tonight, it'll be an interesting meeting. Ryan Byrd referred to a lot of local people as being part of an insurgency. I kind of take that as a compliment, from what we're seeing in Syria. In a matter of few days, there's been an insurgency that's replaced a, a corrupt government, that's been there for 50 years with an insurgency. And I think that sometimes those can be good things, we're all seeking our favorites across the Syria. But maybe they will move in the right direction, and the people will have their rights. If people say there's an insurgency in Du Lake, well, because we weren't being listened to. If you look at the new city council members, the vote count, I think for quote-unquote, what you'd say for insurgency candidates, was 71%. If you include the other person who was disappointed a couple of months ago, who really wasn't part of the original council, the 81% of the vote went for the people of quote-unquote, the Du Lake insurgency. So, I did want those facts to be out there. We're hoping to make Du Lake, we say, okay again. We want where the people are listening to, everybody has a chance to speak. And that's a lot of what our objections have been in Du Lake. You can ask the people from there, and they probably have different opinions, but I think that's the main reason we're moving forward, we like to be heard, we like to be listened to, and we're looking forward to a council that is responsive to the desires of the community rather than just having them on agenda. So, if you're not keen to speak, it could be an interesting meeting out in Du Lake today. I understand that LA Times is covering it, and maybe the other major things, and hopefully our local media will be out there also. Thank you, Tom, you're speaking.
Thank you.
Caller 0151, I'm going to unmute you, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, this is Bobby Russell, I'm calling from Southern Humboldt. I just wanted to kind of clarify some misunderstandings about how things are going in Southern Humboldt. So, things are not going well, as you, I'm sure, know, that the economy has tanked. There's lots of closed buildings, I think maybe Supervisor Wilson has requested a little bit of information about how many businesses are closed, but many of them are closed. And I invite all the supervisors to do a little, a little visit to Garberville and see what's going on. So, that's one thing, but the other thing is that it's wonderful that we have some plans in place and some funds coming down to help with transitional housing, but housing itself is a problem. So, right now, I have probably 15 people that haven't taken rent in months and months and months, some that own their own dwellings, so it has nothing to do with something being wrong. It just has to do with that they're not getting the supports that they need. If they don't have enough money, if somebody doesn't have enough money to pay their rent, they don't get any help at all. So, if they, if they're short like $200 or something, then they just don't get any help. So, what's gonna happen to these 15 to 20 people that haven't paid rent in months and months and months? It's traumatic to get an eviction, it's traumatic to make somebody move that doesn't have any money. They wouldn't have been in this situation in the first place. I urge you to consider this as an urgent problem, that you will contact everybody involved in advocating for Southern Humboldt and do something about this, because there are ways that these buildings and properties can be used, but people aren't outside, who are never gonna get help. It's just not a plan to have more affordable housing down here. I'd appreciate it a lot if you would look into this and really take responsibility for it, thank you.
Thank you.
That is all, Chair Bone.
Great. Now, we will work with our peer of the board, Tracy D'Amico.
Good morning. So, before you is the appointments for the 2025 calendar year for the boards, commissions, and committees that you all sit on. Attached is the appointment list, and my hope is just to go through one at a time. This year, there is one change, I've added the list of ad hoc committees for just a quick oversight to confirm that these are still necessary and need to be in place. So, with that, if we could just start on the list with the first one, which is the, unless you have questions, can I just move forward? Okay, so the first one is the Air Quality Management District. Right now, we have Member Bone, Member Wilson, with the alternate as Madron. Any changes requested?
I'm fine with staying on there, I've been on there 11 years now, I believe, so.
Supervisor Wilson? Okay.
For what it's worth, I'm, you know, mostly okay with this list as it is, so if you want to go through one at a time, that's fine.
I think just for clarity, we should just go through one at a time, we can do it quickly, so. The next one is the Area 1 Aging, and that is Supervisor Madron is the member, Natalie Aurora, Supervisor Aurora is the alternate, do we wish to continue that?
Yes, I continue to age, so I'm fine.
Thank you. The next one is the Humboldt County Audit Committee.
When you stop, we'll replace you, just so you know, okay?
The next is the Audit Committee, and that is a default to the chair and the vice chair, so we will be moving Supervisor Bushnell to the member and Supervisor Wilson as the member, is that okay? Okay, the next item is the HCOG, the Humboldt Association of Governments. Currently, the member is Madron, Supervisor Madron, and the alternate is Supervisor Wilson. Supervisor Madron, would you like to continue?
Yes, please.
Any changes on that? Okay. The California Cannabis Authority, we had appointed in February 2022, this is an indefinite appointment. Just to confirm, we have Supervisor Bone and Tax Treasurer Amy Christiansen, is, would you like to continue?
It's fine.
Great, moving right along, the CSAC appointment we made in October, where our member is Supervisor Bushnell, alternate is Supervisor Aurora. The next item is the Caltrans North District External Advisory Liaison. Currently, we have Member Bone, Supervisor Bone, alternate Supervisor Bushnell.
I actually would like to swap this, if Supervisor Bone is okay with that.
I can't like it, man.
Well, I kind of would like to have a chance.
Sure.
So, we're gonna swap the member to Supervisor Bone on Cal, I mean, to Supervisor Bushnell, and the alternate will be Supervisor Bone.
So, what is the North District? Is that like the northern end of District 1 or something like?
It's District, it's basically District 1, except for, we don't do Mendocino, but we do Del Norte.
Del Norte Humboldt.
CHP, CHP people come and.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Convention Visitors Bureau. We currently have a member from the Economic Development Staff, which is Diane Rios, and Supervisor Bushnell as the alternate.
I have a question about this one, because the, is this necessary to continue forward with this one?
Did they go away?
Well, they're going away at the end of the month.
The Convention Visitors and Bureau.
This is, we attend Humboldt Visitor Bureau meeting, which is not going to be part of the county any longer, on December 31st.
So, typically, after today's appointment, we bring back a list next week on the consent calendar, codifying what was captured today, if we don't have a answer, we can always bring that back on the next week item. I'll look to the CAO to.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just pondering the future path of, I kind of feel like maybe just keep it next year when we assess it. When we were out of contract with them, they didn't invite us to their meetings and didn't let us know about their meetings. And so, we're not going to have a contract with them going forward. I think that it could cause problems if, I mean, what are we gonna do if we don't?
Don't go.
Yeah.
Through the chair, just clarifying question. Do, even if we don't have a contract with them, do they still have seats on their committee, or on their board? That are our, that are our seats, and if so, then we should still appoint, but if not, then?
We currently don't have a vote on that, and so, it's, we just go and attend and give them information about the county contract, and so, it's never been a voting membership.
Thanks for that clarification, I was just wondering, so.
I think it would be fine, I think it would be fine if you, if you wanted to decommission this one. So.
Can you follow up, and we'll decommission next week, put it on the agenda for?
Yeah, as Tracy said, that, yeah, she, she'll put it on.
And do a little follow-up to find out exactly, to make sure, you know, what they expect or don't expect from us, and if they expect us to drop off, or do they want our participation?
Yeah, we, we can certainly circle back with HCVB and just say that it was discussed today, and we feel like this can, this can cease to occur and gain their consensus on that. If they have any concerns with that, then we can address that when we return.
Through, through the chair, just, sorry, so for clarification, we're giving discretion to staff to, if you want to separate this out from your consent item, then just do that.
And typically, what we do is, when something is decommissioned, we usually leave it on this list of appointments for the calendar year and then remove it in 2026. So, on the consent calendar, you'll see it as decommissioned, no appointments. If that is the case, if we find out differently, then we'll readdress it. But it will stay on 2025 list, just to let anyone who would like to review that list know that that was, that's our intent, and then it'll fall off in 2026. Okay, all right. The next one is the Disaster Council, typically, this is a chair and the member. So, that would switch the appointments to Supervisor Bushnell as chair and Supervisor Wilson as vice chair, is that, oh.
Super.
With you guys? So, we'll make that change. Eel Russian River Joint Power Commission, we moved this to leave it on until further notice last year. It is an as-needed, I know there's still some ongoing discussion with this, so we currently have Supervisor Bone as the member, Supervisor Bushnell as the alternate. Any comments on this one?
They're still taking our water.
Yeah, through the chair, this doesn't exist anymore.
Right.
And so, I would, I would just remove it, because we have it discussed later on in sort of the ad hoc.
It is on an ad hoc now, so if you would like me to leave this on, or if you would like me to remove it?
Take it off next year.
Okay, we'll remove it. Okay, the next item is the Redwood Coast Energy Authority. Currently, we have Supervisor Aurora and Supervisor Wilson as the alternate. Is this good to keep? Any comments?
I'm certainly willing to continue serving unless you'd like to swap.
No, no.
Okay, all right.
Perfect the way it is.
Continue in that role, I'm happy to be there, but it is, it is in direct conflict with an item that is coming later that I'm appointed to, so I just flagging that now. But it'll, it's the Multi-Agency Juvenile Justice Coordinating Committee, but we can talk about that on the next page.
Okay, great. The next item is Eureka City and County Roundtable Committee. We typically have these as the local supervisors, which would be Supervisor Bone for District 1 and Supervisor Aurora for District 4. So, we'll leave that as is, the next item is First 5. Currently, the member is Natalie Supervisor Aurora, and then the alternate is Supervisor Bushnell. Are we good with that, or are you?
Okay, is anyone else interested in serving in this role? I very much enjoy it, and will be happy to stay, but I just want to see. Okay, I will note that the time is different now, so I can make that update.
Sure.
It's.
It's no longer at 8:30, I think.
It's no longer at 8:30, it's at either 9:00 or 9:30, now I have to look.
That's fine, I can review the times just to clarify, because those do change.
Yes, they definitely do.
In the future as well.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is the Hazardous Material Response Authority, we have Supervisor Bone as the member, Supervisor Aurora as the alternate, it's as-needed, any changes?
I should just.
Okay. Headwaters Fund Subcommittee, this is as-needed, we currently have two members, which is Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Bone. Great, okay, moving along. Now, we come to the item that Supervisor Aurora was speaking on, the Juvenile Justice Coordination Council. We have Supervisor Aurora as the member and Supervisor Bone as the alternate, but it sounds like there is a timing conflict.
Yes, so this goes kind of hand-in-hand with the next one, the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission, which I'm sworn in as a commissioner for a two-year term right now, which started earlier this year. However, the Juven, the MAGIC, is what they call that, multi-agency group, their meetings have been moved to exactly the same time as the RCEA meetings. So, they're the, sorry, the fourth, the RCEA meetings are the Fourth Thursday at 3:30, and the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council is also the Fourth Thursday at 3:30. So, both of those occur at the same time, so if Supervisor Bone, if you'd be willing to go to that.
I did this one for a few years.
Okay, well, then someone else.
It conflicts.
Can go. Can go. So, it conflicts directly with RCEA, so those times are a little different now.
And it's a conflict once every quarter.
Yes, on a quarterly basis, it conflicts. So, RCEA meets every month, and this meets quarterly.
Where the alternate might need to show up. Yeah.
I just will never be able to go if I'm on RCEA.
I'll take it.
All right. Move that to--
Does that mean Supervisor Bone takes both?
So, that would mean that Supervisor Wilson will be the appointed member to both the Juvenile Justice and the Delinquency Prevention as the member, and Supervisor Bone will remain the alternate on those.
Oh, did Mike say he would take it?
Yes.
Oh, I thought Rex said he would take it.
No, Mike said he would take it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, good.
So, the only issue with that is that I'm sworn in by the courts as a commissioner for a two-year term, but I'm only for the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission.
So--
So, yeah.
And they both are at the same time?
They're not, no. That meeting is Monday. Those are two different meetings, sorry. Those are two completely, they go together in that the idea of someone going to the multi-agency meeting is that they would bring information from that commission to the meeting. The Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission meets on Mondays.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah. So, I think we could have Supervisor Wilson as the alternate for that, and then I could just make sure that it's okay for me to share information with my alternate, share a report to provide by proxy, or maybe there's, we need to do a little bit more legwork around that, but--
I'll do whatever is needed to make this work. But what I'm, the quarterly on the Fourth Thursdays, that's fine. If they're talking about like a monthly, no, okay, then no. So, I hear what Supervisor Arroyo is saying. So, if you're, are you saying you would prefer me as the alternate as opposed, and you remain as the main member, and I'll just hop in as the alternate and you just pass me the information?
Would it be possible for Supervisor Wilson to be the member for the MAGIC? That's the one you sit on as a commissioner?
I don't think there's a problem with him being the member for that one and me being the member for the other one. I think the question is, because the goal is to share information, I think the question, and I don't know if County Council, if you're prepared to answer this, or whether it's a question for, to look at the bylaws of the, because whether or not you can share information with your alternate varies by organization. But so--
That's the whole--
Can I share, well, on RCEA, we can't. So, there's some--
We can't on closed session.
Okay. So, none of this would be closed session. So, can I just share information easily with my alternate?
That would have to be something that we would look into--
Yeah.
--over the next week and possibly address at next week's meeting.
Thank you. Okay, I think that makes sense to address it that way. I just want to make sure because it's an appointment of the courts, and it's sort of, it functions a little bit differently than some of our other--
What would happen if somebody lost an election? So, if this, I mean, in this year, and they were on their second term of the court appointed, they would just appoint, they would just swear in another person, right?
Yeah, you'd have to resign your, I think she'd have to resign her--
Yeah, I'd have to resign, but I mean, I can step down from the position. I can resign. We had someone resign this year, but--
So, Supervisor Arroyo, would it be acceptable to list Supervisor Wilson as the member to both, you as the alternate to both, unless we hear differently, then we'll make it a departmental? Would that work?
I think the preference would be to leave me as the JJDPC member--
Okay.
And to make Supervisor Wilson the multi-agency member, and we'll just resolve the question of how we share information. It could also be that the chair of the commission, who is not me, could share a report with Supervisor Wilson. And so, I think there's going to be a way that we can resolve this, but I think if he's willing to serve, that's great.
So, I'll bring it back with the juvenile justice member as Supervisor Wilson, alternate Arroyo. The delinquencies reversed with Supervisor Wilson as the member and Arroyo as the alternate. Agreed?
Opposite. So, multi-agency is Mike Wilson, member Natalie Arroyo, alternate. And then Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission is me, member Mike Wilson, alternate.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we'll figure out how we share that information effectively.
Okay. All right. The next item, the Clamath Basin Coordination Committee. Last year, we agreed to leave this on the list until further notice. The member is Supervisor Madrone and the alternate is Supervisor Wilson. Is there any change to this?
Yeah, there's a change. That group no longer exists, and the new group is called the ESA Consultation Management Team. ESA Consultation Management Team. And they meet on Third Wednesdays from 10 till 2:00, and I've been attending those meetings whenever possible.
Okay, I will make that change to the title and bring that back on consent unless anyone else has some additional comments. Okay. The next one is the LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. We currently have two members, which is Supervisor Madrone, Supervisor Bushnell, with the alternate as Wilson.
Glad to continue.
Great. Behavioral Health Board. We have current member Supervisor Arroyo, and then we have Supervisor Madrone as alternate.
Do you miss it, Steve?
I'm there for you when I need to attend, which has been fairly often.
It has been, it has been a conflict for me from time to time, but it is something I'm happy to continue with as long as it's okay to tap you as--
Yep.
Occasionally needed. Thank you.
Great. The next item is the National Association of Counties, also known as NACO. We have the current member as Supervisor Bone, Supervisor Bushnell is the alternate. Any changes? Okay. The next item is North Coast Emergency Medical Service Governing Board. We have Supervisor Bone as the member, and then we have the Public Health Officer as the alternate. Any changes? Nope, all right. Great Redwood Trail Authority. This is a two-year appointment. Supervisor Madrone is the current member, and Supervisor Bushnell is an alternate. Please do not be confused that there is also a public member that you appoint, which will show up on your what-do-we-appoint-to agenda item.
I'm happy to continue serving, and I know Jeff Ronalak is also.
Great. A Redwood Regional Economic Development Commission. We have Supervisor Arroyo as the member, Supervisor Wilson as the alternate. Seeing no changes.
Happy to continue serving, but there's some changes in where and when they meet, but I'll get with you on that.
Perfect, thank you. RCRC Golden State Finance, we have already made that appointment as being Supervisor Bone, alternate Supervisor Bushnell. December Viren's Joint Conference Committee, they meet as needed. We have Supervisor Bone as the member and Supervisor Madrone as the alternate.
Actually, we're both members.
Oh, both members, thank you, Steve. St. Joseph Hospital Advocacy Committee, as needed, Supervisor Bone again and Supervisor Madrone. Okay, look at us. Next page, we have the Humboldt Transit Authority. We currently have Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Arroyo on that committee. Any changes? Nope, great. Northwest California Resource Conservation and Development Council. We have Supervisor Madrone as the member, Supervisor Bone as the first alternate, Supervisor Arroyo as the second alternate.
Can I ask what that is?
Sure.
Yeah, it's a multi-county RC and D, different than an RCD.
Yeah.
And it's run by Mark Lancaster out of Trinity County. Most of the work happens in Trinity County, a little bit in Del Norte, and part of that is because we have such high capacity in Humboldt County. At one time, there used to be the Five County Coho Program that Mark also ran.
I remember that.
At any rate, it continues. We meet, I think, quarterly.
Okay, I'm an alternate for that, so it helps to know what it is. I was looking at this list and trying to delineate between that and the North Coast Resource Partnership, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, and Supervisor Bone often attends as well, so we have good representation there.
Okay, the next item is the Humboldt Waste Management Authority. Current member is Supervisor Bushnell. Supervisor Bone is the first alternate, and Supervisor Madrone is the second alternate. Any requests for change here? Oh, seeing none?
Well, it is a little difficult for me to get to these. If someone else is interested, I'm happy to stay if nobody else is interested.
I've been on this board before many years ago, and I don't want to add one more to my plate, but I just saw that you were willing to--
I'm happy to stay, but I have had to have Rex go several times, and I didn't realize that there was a second alternate because Rex and I have been gone, and so I guess I could lean on Steve as well in the future. So, like, I've missed, I think, two meetings, and Supervisor Bone wasn't available as well. So, knowing that there was a, there's a second alternate, I can lean on you a little. Okay, I'm happy to stay then.
Okay, the next item is the North Coast Resource Partnerships, and that is Supervisor Bone as a member, Supervisor Madrone as a member, and Supervisor Arroyo as the alternate. Great. Workforce Development Board. Currently, we have Supervisor Bushnell as the member and Supervisor Bone as the alternate.
Rex, do you have any, do you want to swap?
No, you've been doing a good job on there, so--
Okay, thank you.
And I've gone for you a few times on that one also, so--
All right, now we're--
Sorry, is that one where we could also have a second alternate? I'm just wondering if the issue arises where you're both at the same event.
It does often. We have been gone, although Rex has been able to cover most of them, there's been a couple, like when we were at CSAC, but we were all at CSAC except for--
Right.
Yeah, so I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. I don't even know if that's an option for them, but--
All right, thank you. So, then we have other committee appointments down here. We have the Airline Recruitment Subcommittee, which is an as needed. I'm not sure if that's still viable. So, we have Supervisor Wilson as a member, Supervisor Arroyo as an alternate. Any thoughts on that issue?
I think it's confusing a little bit because we'll get the public asking us about being on the Airport Committee, and this isn't an Airport Committee, it's a Recruitment Committee. And frankly, I'm not sure we have any sort of active, I mean, we always have active recruitment through our economic development and airport staff, but it's not been in the same way as this was formulated and founded. So, I would say just, you know, it's okay for us to not have certain committees, and I would say this one is one of those.
I will highlight the item and confirm that it's okay and note it on being disbanded, and it will fall off in 2026 if that all works out.
This isn't to say that we may not, that we wouldn't come back necessarily to create some sort of airport-related committee in some form or fashion, and I think there's probably some need and desire to just, to have an item come back to this board at some point on this issue. It's just not airline recruitment, so I appreciate that, thanks.
Okay, we'll take a review of that.
And through the chair, it's the Aviation Committee that we all appoint members to, but none of the board are on it. Yeah. Not Airport, just Aviation.
It's the public.
This is something that might also be able to be designated as an ad hoc in the future if needed because it's a specific agenda-type situation. So, we'll look into it, and I'll give you some information on that in the staff report on when this item comes back.
Great.
All right, so now we are going to look at the ad hocks that we currently have active, and the first one is the Fire Service Ad hoc, and we have Supervisor Madrone and Supervisor Bushnell. This is an ongoing ad hoc. I do know that it seems to be current and active. Any comment on that?
I'm happy to stay on, however, if someone else wanted to be on here. It is pretty interesting, especially for the rural areas.
I mean, I'd like to be on there, but, and I don't mind, we kind of focused on where they were working, right? So, wherever that group was working, we tried to get supervisors in that space. But I'm happy to, it depends on what their schedule is. That's the only thing I'm concerned about, so I just want to make sure it doesn't conflict with my out-of-town work.
This ad hoc is on an as-needed basis, and right now, the focus has been more on the Trinidad-West Haven area.
Yeah. I'm happy to, to, if you want--
Yeah, if you want to jump on there and have an opportunity, yeah.
Great, so we will be replacing Supervisor Bushnell with Supervisor Wilson on the Fire Service Ad hoc.
And I will say that Supervisor Bushnell has been a real asset to this committee, certainly maybe because she has 25 out of the 45 volunteer fire departments. But Southern Humboldt has really made some tremendous progress over the last several years, and I agree with the current shift. We're going to miss you there, but I know you've stayed very involved in this issue, so--
Great. The next item is the TOT Ad hoc Working Group. We currently have Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Wilson. Any updates on the status of necessity for that?
I think this one can be resolved. This was around Measure J.
I'll ask the CAO what her thoughts are on this one. You mean, do you want this around as helpful?
I think that this one could be resolved, yeah. We've, I mean, we've developed the spending plan for it, and I think we've got those priorities fairly well-established. And for your board, it's really just what you've done in the last budget was just shifting that a little bit. So, I think the ad hoc did a good job of identifying the top priorities, and that has helped to guide your board, and so I think you could dissolve at this point.
There will be further all-board discussions in regards to the TOT. We've directed as a board to come back with some information about where it's collected, maybe relook at some of the allocations, but we don't need an ad hoc to do that.
Well, this was specific to Measure J, not the TOT, which that conversation will come back on the TOT, not Measure J. We already did that.
Great, I will bring this back with showing that this one has been, the task has been complete, the charge has been complete, and it will fall off of the ad hoc list in 2026. The next item is the Budget Ad hoc Committee. That has been Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Arroyo. I'm sure this is something that's as needed, but I don't know if you would like to change membership or not.
On this one, we do struggle in, from a staff perspective of getting you all to these meetings. It's very labor-intensive to meet with all of the departments, so it's a very compressed timeframe for us, and so that's a challenge we experience. I think it's also, there's pros and cons to having you all in those meetings also. So, I think, you know, I lean into both Supervisor Arroyo and Supervisor Bushnell as to your feedback as to whether you feel like it's more beneficial or less beneficial in that regards, but from a timing perspective, it is very challenging for us to have two supervisors participating in that process because it's a very compressed timeframe for us to meet with all of the departments.
I will say that it's a lot of meetings, and it is, has been difficult, not only for Supervisor Arroyo and myself, but staff is canceled as well and had to move, as well as directors. I don't know if maybe having just one member might help, and Supervisor Arroyo is in Eureka, it might be easier for her. It is difficult for me at times.
I did find it extremely hard to fit in. Because as you see, you know, everybody else, everybody has so many assignments. It was very valuable to me for learning, but I don't know that I, I was kind of hoping to pass the torch this year on this one, having done it a couple of years in a row along with Supervisor Bushnell. So if we are going to keep it going, I would suggest a change. And if we want to suspend it or meet with departments on an as-needed basis, if either of those approaches were, seemed desirable, that would be okay with me as well.
How about if, you know, there are a few departments that struggle with budget and maybe, maybe if we compressed it a little bit and some of them are meeting their budget challenges as well. And, or we could just suspend it unless someone else on this board wants to do it. But it is, I don't want to continue forward either. It was super difficult for me to, to meet all those meetings.
Yeah, my, my suggestion would be to, to decommission it.
That sounds great.
Okay, and then if we need it in the future, we can bring it back.
I also think that has the value of allowing staff to have frank staff conversations without the kind of different power dynamic that we create without always meaning to, but just being there, it changes the conversation. And I, I trust that staff can work together to bring us good solutions to budget issues.
I want to thank the two members of the Budget Committee for the time and effort. I do know that it was pretty overwhelming. And it wasn't just overwhelming because of time, but also we're in a budget constriction, you know, and, and time. And so those are some of the most difficult conversations. And to have them at that granular level with the various departments, I am sure was very difficult. And I want to appreciate and thank those two members for bringing the urgency and the sober discussions that came from those, those meetings to the rest of the boards. So thank you so much. I want, I just, I don't want this one to just sort of fade away without, you know, giving you my verbal thank you cards, so, thanks.
Here, here.
All right, the next item is the Cannabis Reform Initiative Ad Hoc. The current members are Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Aurora. Comments about this?
I think we can dissolve this one as well. And Director Ford is in agreeance.
I actually do have, your board did direct us to come back with more information on modifying Measure S, so.
That wasn't part of this, though?
Okay.
At all, because I can't be on those discussions. So it could, it could, if you want to create a new ad hoc for Measure S, that would be fine, I couldn't be on it. This was more around the, whatever that.
The Measure A.
The Measure A, yep. So this, this one needs to dissolve.
Okay, we'll be removing this one. The next item is the Ad Hoc DHHS Tribal Government to Government Communications. Supervisor Madrone and Supervisor Bone are the members. Any thoughts?
I'm curious if you all have met this year.
I think I've been in Trinidad once and Bear River once or twice.
Is this, is this a particular ad hoc? Okay.
Yeah, it's on an as-needed basis. I have a lot of other G to G happening with the Great Redwood Trail, but that's separate.
Okay, all right, so I think we'll keep that one. And moving on to Offshore Wind, the Broad Scope Subcommittee Ad Hoc is Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Aurora. And then right below that is the Economic Development scope of the Offshore Wind. And that is Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bushnell. Any comments? I'm assuming these need to be active? Okay.
I do have a comment, which is that it's confusing for people that we have four out of five supervisors on ad hocks. I understand the division between the two and that one is more, you know, workforce and economic development, and one is everything else. It's just sometimes community partners are a little bit perplexed by it.
It is, it is, it also becomes questionable. We've had a lot of comments about the Brown Act as far as staff. And while you're all allowed to attend conferences, really, the ad hoc focus and how we try to explain it to the, to the public is that you're charged with separate tasks. But it does absolutely show, we perceived as possibly a Brown Act.
And, and we do really, I will say, I think we do a very good job of keeping to our pairs. And then, you know, it's a little awkward maybe for Supervisor Madrone because he's left out of all of it.
Not awkward at all.
Not awkward for him at all. I, I would, you know, suggest that we consider having one subcommittee. And I know that's going to be hard because everybody has an interest in this.
I would think that we haven't broken the Brown Act and we are very careful about it. And if the community wants to continue asking those questions, they can. However, I am interested and I think Supervisor Bone is as well as staying on the workforce portion of it.
When we established this, we had lengthy conversations about how this would work because it was rather convoluted. And to Supervisor Bushnell's point, the Economic Development one, you might actually want to change that to say Workforce Development because that is very specific to those Workforce Development conversations. And Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Bushnell sit on the Workforce Development Committees. And then Wilson and Arroyo are on the other. And the default is if it crosses outside of a workforce conversation and has workforce components, then we default to Arroyo and Wilson in those conversations. So that has been our sort of safety net there if, if the conversation goes any deeper than just workforce.
I will add that to the ad hoc information here. So because I do sometimes refer people to the ad hoc list on the, on the website, so there will be more clarity on that. Yeah, for the most fault, there are questions, but I think once we give them an explanation, it seems to resolve itself. But just wanted to bring that up.
Through the chair, when we started this, I also was like, ooh. But I'm going to tell you that it has worked much better than I thought it was going to in terms of that separation. And so I appreciate that, thanks.
It does bring up the question of our reports out to the rest of the board. I know that we have packed agendas and a lot of times we can't report out on all of our committee activities and commission activities. But it might be helpful for the community to understand what these are, to do a report out at some point from our two ad hocks to the full board.
Great. The next item is the Strategic Plan Ad Hoc, which is Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Aurora. I know you met next, last week, so you are still active. Any other comments? Was it last?
No, I think. I think that was the Facilities Group, so that one's very active. I think we could disband the Strategic Plan Ad Hoc.
Great. Measures Z Expenditure Ad Hoc, Supervisor Bushnell, Supervisor Wilson.
We're done with this one.
Just through the chair, actually, the Strategic Plan, we do annual updates, is that? And would you want us to be part of that annual update review at all?
My vision for the annual update is, you know, it's very task-oriented, so going through, yes, we've met it, no, we haven't, here's the goals. And I think we'll work heavily with the departments on where they're at with that. So I don't think we need a heavy supervisor component in that.
You know, I'm a less committee person.
Yes.
So the Measures Z then would be decommissioned as well because their charge was to bring back the process which happened last year. So we will decommission that one. I'm happy to get these off the list as well. And the next item is the Road Funding Ad Hoc, which is Supervisor Bushnell, Supervisor Madrone.
So my question would be on this one, although we're done and that measure O passed, there will be still some discussion on formation of a committee. And so I do believe this one needs to continue on.
To wrap it all up, yeah, sounds good.
Agreed?
Yeah.
Okay. The next item is Tribal Government to Government. This was Supervisor Madrone, Supervisor Bushnell. This is different than the previous one as this charge is issues that arise not related to child welfare services.
So it has been difficult to find time for the tribes and us. We've met one time in Del Norte. And I don't know that we're accomplishing anything here because we haven't gotten those meetings formed. But I'll default to the CAO to, for her thoughts.
Yes, I, I agree with that. And, and it has been, we were getting requests from the tribes to meet. And when we got those requests, we used this ad hoc to, to meet those requests. And, and we, frankly speaking, didn't receive response to, you know, responding to the request for a meeting. There has been time, we do seem to have better luck in communicating with our tribal partners when the reach out comes from a board member. So I think there is a lot of value in having those connections. And so tapping you all to, to do that reach out, it has been helpful, but I don't think we're.
Do we need to specifically have an ad hoc member? I think it could be any board member that has a connection with one of the tribes to do that reach out. I, my, and Supervisor Madrone can chime in here, but we have not, and I'm not sure how the tribes are feeling, but there doesn't seem to be the need. They don't seem to want to meet for this kind of an interaction. Would love if they could find the time, but it just hasn't happened. And it's been a year. And we've, so, yeah.
Yes, I agree. And we made numerous attempts.
Attempts, yeah.
Just a process and clarification, we have this, oh, these are everything not related to child welfare. So then how is this different than the one we just went through?
That one was specific to child welfare services.
I see, I see.
Yeah, the intent was to have this opportunity to meet with, with them and hear their, their thoughts and how they want to interact with the board and our agency. And to be able to have those frank conversations and then ad hoc meeting with the CAO and just one other member.
Human Resources.
Oh, Human Resources, Zach O'Anan. We went to Del Norte, which isn't even our county, but they requested, and so we went. It was a great meeting. And then we've made several attempts to, Zach has made several attempts to organize meetings and they just don't seem to fall in place. And so I'm just feeling, you know, this ad hoc isn't being used for what it was intended for. And I, now we don't even have any meetings scheduled, and so I don't see a purpose for it.
I think also, we established this secondary one because of a request from the Trinidad Rancheria that came about. I think in the future, we could probably tap Supervisor Madrone or Supervisor Bone with the Child Support Ad Hoc, should we receive a request from any of our tribal partners to, to have G to G interactions.
I think that.
Yes, sorry.
I just, I think that sounds good. I mean, if, if it could, if we could have the meetings, but we're just, we're just not, so.
My suggestion would be to disband this one and to modify the other one to just indicate tribal.
G to G, yeah. That sounds like a good approach.
So this was, was this ad hoc supposed to be like issue by issue? Or was it supposed to be formulating a strategy for, for us as a, as a institution for, you know, as a government to have, you know, to expand or do better or do more of, of our government relations with tribes? So I was just kind of wondering, it's, you know, because we, we have talked a lot about, you know, doing, having some strategy around this and actually even, you know, talking about how do we put that within, in the institution, not just, you know, one department at a time, but, you know, how do we do that better? And so I'm just wondering, are we losing that now? I mean, is that what, so I'm, because if that is what, what this is supposed to and it's not getting there, then, I mean, I'm happy to jump in, you know, help if I can. Or I'm sure there's others that can do that. But I don't know if like, if just like saying we're putting it under child welfare and then just expanding that, are we asking those members to then take on the role of coming up with that strategy? Or are we just disbanding that effort?
The issue Supervisor Wilson was, what they wanted, we wanted more communications and open those lines of communications for the tribes. And it's not the issue of this ad hoc not trying, is that we, they haven't been responsive to the request of meetings. And so we, we've tried, we've tried many, many times to get meetings together, to have them, you know, bring up issues, to engage with issues. And they, they just, doesn't seem to work out. So it hasn't been a lack of us trying. We've, we have tried. So, I mean, we're, I think Supervisor Madrone and myself are willing if we could actually get meetings set up and, and get there. It just has not happened and it hasn't been at the lack of the request.
I'll just say, I think it would be helpful, I know we talked about a broader tribal engagement strategy. It would be helpful, I know it can be difficult to hear back. And depending on what's going on with each individual tribe, there can be, sometimes we're not contacting the right person. You know, my, my experience has been each tribe handles communications differently. And it's, it's one thing if it's sequin, it's project-related, and that's kind of a narrow, not narrow, but a process that has more prescriptive steps. But when it comes to general communications, it would be helpful to hear from each tribal government, what their preferred method of communication is, like who's their point of contact that they would like us to reach out to, for example. And that could be something that we do with the, I know we have these, you know, district boundaries and some of us have more tribes within our, you know, our districts than others. But we could each do the legwork of finding out what the best method of communication is and with whom, and compiling that just for, for county government to use. Because this comes up again and again that it's, you know, can be, everyone has different communication preferences. And so, you know, that might be my suggestion is that we do that individual legwork and bring back information and have a list compiled and try to keep that updated.
So I, I mean, if you, as individual board members, want to do that, but we did do that, we made many phone calls to say, who do we, who do we contact? How do we do this? How would you like to have communications come to you? It's not for lack of trying. And it was through Human Resources and the CAO's office. Then the CAO and the Human Resources leaned on Steve and I to make those contacts. And we did, we tried. So if the board individually feels like they could have better connections, that's great. If we could get, you know, a list of who, who we're supposed to contact. But it wasn't for lack of trying, I do want to say that.
And I will say through the chair, if I might, there are a lot of individual meetings that happen as district supervisors with tribes. I have quite a few of them. Rex has a great relationship with Trinidad and my relationship's been improving. But Rex really handles most of the things that are direct with that. But I meet with Hoopa monthly, I meet with Yurok, you know, six, seven times a year. But I meet with Hoopa monthly, I meet with Yurok, you know, six, seven times a year, Blue Lake, Mike and I both meet with the Blue Lake Rancheria on various issues, so there is a lot going on, I wouldn't call that G to G, it's really just district supervisors meeting with the tribes to help with projects and considerations and things like that. So I think our current system is working pretty good, but you're right, I mean, we did talk about like, do we need a tribal liaison, for instance, or other systems, and I think that still may very well be true. And then there's a lot of stuff going on, like I said, with the Great Redwood Trail, and particularly with Eel River, tribal entities, as well as here around the bay, Wiat, et cetera. So I think it's working right now, and I think the evidence of that is that staff have worked hard to reach out, and there's been limited requests basically coming back. You're right, it's nice to kind of figure out what the communication person and systems are in each tribe. I just don't see that there's a problem right now, not that we can always try and be more proactive, I think that's always going to be true, but just to add a little, little detail to it.
I think disbanding this one for the time being and having it be, you know, a, each, each supervisor working with those they have relationships with or those within their district would be, would be acceptable to me until we have a more clear scope, and I do think I would like to revisit the idea of a staff person sometime in the future who can fill that role.
And in the meantime, we're modifying the, the G to G that was child welfare focused to and expanded, so rather than having two, we'll have one now.
So we will have-
It's an expanded role.
We will have one, my only question is, will the members be Supervisor Madrona and Supervisor Bone for the combined? And Supervisor Bushnell, you're okay with that? That's what we'll do. Okay, great. Supervisor.
So just to clarify, I mean, we have talked for a long time about coming up with a better strategy, you know, kind of global strategy for communications and negotiations with, you know, with local tribes. This is the committee that's gonna, so if there's efforts to do that, then that's the, this is the committee that's gonna do that. Okay, great, thanks.
One of the other areas where there's ongoing communication is with our Sheriff, Sheriff Hansel in regards to law enforcement, is an item on our agenda today with Blue Lake, you know, codifying certain relationships and things there, so that's an ongoing thing as well, and I often hear about that with Hoopa, Yurok, and others, and thank you Sheriff Hansel for your work in that regard.
Okay.
Got it, sure.
All right, moving along to the Humboldt Facilities Master Plan Working Group, that is currently Supervisor Arroyo and Wilson. I know that's active, so status quo with that one, great. Then the next item is the Eel Russian River Ad hoc, which is currently Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Wilson. This was established to the decommission of the project and water issues, still ongoing, Supervisor Wilson?
Still ongoing, very active, yeah.
Okay, and then the last one is the Sheriff Oversight Committee Ad hoc, this was the most recently one added to our ad hoc list, I have Supervisor Arroyo, Supervisor Bushnell as the members, this is continuing, ongoing. Okay, so that is the list that I have before you today, I will make the changes, bring it back on consent for the 17th, and when that is approved, we will work hard to populate your calendar and keep you busy next year. Just to be clear, there is a separate list, a separate item, which will be coming to you, which is where the boards and commissions that you all appoint to, you'll be seeing that as a consent item for the Maddy List next week on consent, so there is a distinction. Any other questions?
Great job.
Thanks, Chair. With that, I'll move right on to our time set at 10:30.
Chair, public comment?
Oh, is there any public comment on this item? Saying none?
And also a vote, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the new appointments and to update the ad hoc list.
I'll second.
And Chair, may we take a five-minute break, please?
We need to vote.
Yeah.
Sure.
Supervisor Madrona?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Can we make a five chart? All right. We now have a sheriff presentation, overview of the Humboldt County Recovery Annex to the Emergency Operations Plan, and we have Sheriff Hansel and Ryan Derby.
Excellent, thank you Chair Bone for having us here today, one of the components of the sheriff's office is the Office of Emergency Services, Ryan Derby's our OES manager, one of the things that we constantly do is revise our policies and update, and we're going to bring our policy here for you today. The core of our Office of Emergency Services is to prepare and train our community, also disaster response, and also disaster recovery, all those things are very key to the success of our organization, and OES is actively doing this stuff every single day, and, and we had, we seen a little bit of that last week with, with our earthquake and our tsunami, and the job never ends, and I'm thankful for Ryan and our OES staff, basically has five people that run this whole entire thing. I'm proud of what we're presenting to you here today, it's a very exhaustive, a hundred and some odd page document that covers a lot of ground, and let me just explain this one quick thing, it's like if we don't get this right, the county could lose millions of dollars, okay, and that's why this is so important, that, that we are here providing this to us and has a guideline for our community to, to, to do an active recovery in the event of emergency, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our OES manager, Ryan Derby.
Great, thank you, let me see if you can hear me okay. Well, good, good morning, I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak with you all about the progress of developing this plan, I do, before we get started, just want to give kudos to our own Tom Dewey, who's sitting in the audience, who's kind of the architect to this plan, spent hours exhaustively researching best or good practices throughout the state to essentially create what we're presenting today. So the goal with the presentation is just to highlight a few components of the draft recovery annex, discuss some recent changes that we've implemented into Humboldt County's response and recovery processes, and encourage all of you to take a look at the draft annex and provide some feedback while it's still out for public review and comment. Just for some context of the review and drafting process that's occurred to date, the annex was initially sent for partner review in November of 2023, that partner review closed in December of '23, and then once feedback was incorporated into the annex, it was presented to the Humboldt County Disaster Council in June of 2024, and currently it's undergoing a 30-day public review and comment period, which is going to close next week on December 16th, and this presentation today is part of that public review process. Oh, forgot I've got the clicker here. So just to give a little background on how this project started, as you're all aware, on December 20th of 2022, we had a violent 6.4 magnitude earthquake, followed by a 5.4 magnitude aftershock that occurred on January 1 of 2023, and resulting from these earthquakes and more than 200 aftershocks, several dozen dwelling units were red tagged, as well as several hundred yellow tagged, which is illustrated on the photo there, and we identified as part of our after-action process for that incident, a need to compile recovery processes into a singular document. Humboldt County's never had a recovery plan or a recovery annex, and the goal of this new annex is to outline the various stages of recovery, outline possible state and federal recovery programs, and local infrastructure and systems that need to be implemented or addressed to have a successful recovery process. During the response and recovery to the 2022 earthquake, we had Cal OES staff working in our county EOC for over three months, with ongoing and continued engagement to this day through both the Long Term Recovery Group and through some ad hoc committees that we've established. The OES team for Humboldt County's utilized this partnership with Cal OES to collect information around the state's recovery process, identify best or good practices throughout the state, and lessons learned from other instances in other counties, so we can incorporate it into the draft recovery annex that we have today. The development of the annex began while the EOC was still activated for the 2022 earthquake, and then the initial draft again was completed in October of 2023. Currently, as the sheriff alluded to, our draft annex is 187 pages, from title page to the end of the document, but it's really intended to be a sort of choose-your-own-adventure document, where you can use the table of contents as a checklist, depending on where you're at in the recovery process, rather than having to understand and read the entire document. We've broken the annex down into four main sections, this way the user can navigate to the relevant section and find some suggestions or best practices according to where we're at in the incident timeline. This image here kind of depicts what the incident timeline is, this is a federal graphic that we've incorporated into the plan, that shows our ongoing preparedness before, during, and after incidents, when the disaster starts, and then what the short-term, intermediate, and long-term recovery process covers in terms of the days, weeks, months, and years following an incident. So by incorporating this phasing of response and recovery operations, we've identified a three-phased approach that breaks into, again, short, intermediate, and long-term, and these phases describe how the operations of recovery can evolve over time, promoting unity of effort between local, regional, state, and federal incident operations. The federal and state recovery concepts section, which is the first section identified in the plan, also covers the various state and federal recovery programs potentially available post-disaster, it covers the proclamation process, categories of damages that we're responsible for gathering and reporting, as well as various laws and grant programs that support recovery efforts. Also important to this section is it identifies what the benchmarks for, for entry into those programs are, and can help explain why in certain circumstances we don't qualify for various recovery programs post, post-incident, which is a huge talking point post-earthquake or any natural disaster that we've encountered time and time again. We also identify the community lifeline construct and how lifeline status can serve as an indicator for recovery status. I'm going to get into lifelines in the next slide just to talk about what that means and how we're incorporating it in Humboldt County. And it's important to note that the, the programs and applicable laws to recovery are extremely difficult to track, if you do a search online, you're going to find kind of a, a long list of expired programs and current programs, but this plan, at least as of today, has the most up-to-date list that, that we've seen, listing all the state and federal programs that could potentially be available to us. So lifelines initially were developed in 2017, we really just started adopting them in Humboldt County in 2022, and then putting it into practice this past year, and what they are is eight buckets essentially that make up the most fundamental services in the community that enable all other aspects of society to function. Lifelines are the integrated network of assets, services, and capabilities that are used day-to-day in the community. You can see up here, public safety and security, food, hydration, shelter, health and medical, power, fuel, communications, transportation, hazardous materials, and water systems. Water Systems is the eighth lifeline that was just instituted this past year, marking a break between hydration and then public infrastructure for water delivery. So we, again, have begun using this lifeline construct primarily as a way to assess and report disaster impacts, and we see lifelines as a way to help prioritize both initial response efforts, but also long-term, short, and intermediate-term recovery. You may have seen in recent situation reports for, you know, the storms or even the earthquake last week, that we're incorporating these lifelines into our situation reporting, and what that does is help immediately identify where priority areas for service are, because we use a color-tiered system where if a lifeline is critically damaged, it'll show up as red, if there's moderate damage, it'll be yellow, and if it's situation normal, it'll be green. So this graphic depicts what the workflow of the initiation of the public assistance process is, this section of the annex discusses short-term recovery, which is focused on the first days and weeks after an incident, and this is where the focus is on health and safety needs beyond immediate rescue, which rescues in the response phase, not the recovery phase, but it also focuses on the assessment and scope of damage, gathering field reports, gathering residential impacts, damages to public service and, and public infrastructure, and identifying ways or systems that we can implement to address those immediate recovery needs. The section also goes in-depth into the damage assessment process and how disaster impact data is coordinated within the operational area, up through the region to the state, and through the public assistance process. Also discusses individual assistance programs and briefly touches on local assistance center considerations, although we do have a separate local assistance center plan that is going to need to be updated as well, and it discusses the implementation of a recovery section within the Emergency Operations Center, which is a, a new construct that we have depicted here. So one critical lesson that we learned out of the 2022 earthquake was the need to prioritize recovery early in the response, oftentimes recovery comes after the fact, but if we wait to implement recovery programs until after the immediate response is, is concluded, we're already behind the ball. So we've used the, the practice that we implemented in 2022 to create essentially a new Incident Command System, or ICS, section within the EOC, particularly when it's a complex emergency that's going to require multiple month or multiple year recovery, and the split that you see here splits recovery out of finance, where finance is largely focused on public reimbursement or recouping costs to public infrastructure, county facilities, county staff, and recovery, the recovery section's largely focused on, you know, creating connections with non-governmental organizations, with the community, and standing up a long-term recovery group that can kind of oversee the recovery effort after the, the county's initial response and recovery efforts have concluded. Moving into intermediate-term recovery, this refers to the weeks and months after an incident, and it's largely community engagement and data management-driven, and in this period, we're also looking at developing an incident-specific recovery plan, you know, this recovery annex kind of outlines the various programs and considerations, but each incident requires its own unique recovery plan for the unique damages and impacts to the community that have been inflicted post-disaster. It also, in this section, identifies recovery needs and establishment of time-set targets for implementation of recovery actions, and also engaging the community to figure out what their ongoing and unmet needs are, gather input into the recovery process to help focus that long-term recovery effort that comes after this phase. Also, a big lesson learned in the 2022 earthquake was the need to engage some non-traditional partners in recovery, you know, we often look at, you know, governmental structures or governmental programs for our recovery, but that's not effective for the community need, so the section talks about what partner groups to collaborate with, critical positions or functions such as a disaster case management program, or in the case of the 2022 earthquake, the hiring of a, a recovery manager to oversee that effort, and also bringing in funders, because we know that if we don't meet a federal disaster threshold, we're not going to see federal funding come through except with some smaller programs, so the need to identify funding is outlined in this, this chapter as well. We've also found and outlined in this document that data management is one of the most critical aspects of recovery, and this, this historically has been a struggle, you know, specifically with the incident that we've been talking about, the 2022 earthquake, but with this plan, we identify a need to have data sources coming from a variety of different partners and different sources within the community, but having a searchable and centralized dataset that we can then pass on to a long-term recovery group and ultimately to, you know, case management system to oversee that, that longer-term, you know, needs delivery. And then lastly, what we cover in this plan is the long-term recovery- And then lastly, what we cover in this plan is the long-term recovery. This is the months and years after an incident. In the long-term recovery phase, the emergency's clearly over, it's been over for a long time, and the role of county emergency management starts to diminish. So at this point in the recovery, long-term recovery group or groups should be established and regularly meeting to address ongoing unmet needs of the community, and the continued community efforts that the government's involved in largely turns or transitions to a guidance and support role rather than a leading role. So I guess in that respect, it's important for the county and county emergency management to stay involved in this process but not be driving it, maintaining a good network of community organizations, funders, and making sure that the recovery plan that was established for that specific incident is adhered to and adjusted as necessary. And it largely focuses on the continued implementation of community or project champions, you know, bringing in those partners to help drive the service delivery and the funding forward as we move forward in the recovery effort. But again, you know, before we conclude, this plan is up for public review until mid-next week, so if you haven't had the opportunity to go through the light 187 pages of reading, I encourage you to. And the goal is to bring this plan back after we've incorporated feedback for adoption sometime mid-next month, January 2025.
I'll bring it back to the board. Nice job, by the way, for everybody involved. And I do like the part about this explaining when a presidential and a governor complain, you know, calls for an emergency situation, because that actually came into play last week trying to explain the differences, and you might get into that just... No, anyway. Supra's material?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Thank you, Ryan, and I just want to thank all the members of the team that were downstairs in the bunker, working diligently to try and respond to the most recent earthquake, big one, but boy, we did dodge a bullet literally with it being a roller rather than a shaker, I guess, whatever the difference is. But it was impressive. I really enjoyed being down there during the updates by, I'm not sure your rank, but Mr. Dewey. Incredible job down there by everybody. So it was good for me. It was actually my first time down there. I know Rex is down there a lot, but for me, that was my first time.
I got thrown out.
Too much interference, right? Yeah, if we go, we're listeners, right? Not... At any rate, Water Systems, I'm glad to see that piece of it being added in. And there's a lot of talk about, you know, getting grant monies for distributed water storage. You know, we often think about water as something that's municipal, where we have really big 200,000-gallon tanks, or Ruth Lake, or whatever it might be, but literally getting everybody to have, you know, a couple thousand gallons on hand. Cal Fire requires that of new construction, but all the older stuff that's been around forever, most of the people do not have storage. And there's a lot of monies out there through grant programs to do this. I've been working with the city of Trinidad to try and develop some grants for our watershed area around Trinidad, but I think having that distributed water storage at every rural location that you can, and even in urban locations to some degree, although people lose electricity a lot less in the urban centers than they do in the rural areas of the county. So that's just something that can be connected to your roof with rainwater collection and all kinds of great things, because when we lose electricity, it is often during really stormy times where there's an abundance of water happening. The other piece is that there's a lot of new technology around small hydro systems below culvert outlets, literally where you've got, you know, rural areas that have a road, culvert, and you can put this little bathtub thing or little like wash tub thing below it and actually produce electricity to a battery to run your own pump, because often, you know, water storage in the rural areas involves pumps. And, you know, we're able, many of us to have a generator to kind of keep the refrigerator going, a few lights, maybe the internet, but keeping the pump going is a whole nother matter, and I'm working on my own property to try and get that kind of resiliency. But those are a couple of areas that I think kind of go along with that whole water component. Just after this recent event, I've had a lot of people calling about water storage issues. Also, it's there for fire, so it's not just an earthquake or a loss of electricity but from windstorms, but fire. You know, having that distributed storage increases our resiliency for response times, because when the water tender gets there or the truck, they have limited capacity, how much water they have. And if there's distributed storage right there with the proper nozzles, et cetera, then we're so much better off in terms of preparedness. So just want to share those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Supra's Royal?
Sure, thank you. I had a couple questions. I will continue reading this and provide additional thoughts if they come up. You said it was about a week that we have to provide comments? Okay, great. I have a couple today. They're questions slash comments, depending on the answer. So one thing that I was curious how it fits into the mix, excuse me, with recovery is I was thinking about, and I've looked at some other recovery plans that speak to in disasters that involve a large loss of life, longer-term body identification and recovery, which includes, you know, looking at teeth or medical records. How does that factor into this? Is it a different part of our disaster plan?
It is. So that specific aspect would be considered more of a response action, though it is recovery. It's recovery of human remains rather than individual recovery or public recovery. So there are a few other planning efforts that we're undergoing right now. One of them is a comprehensive update to the county's emergency operations plan, which is a 2015 plan that is not currently up to snuff with state and federal legislation. So this, today's annex is going to be an annex to that updated plan. We won't be getting into specifics like that, but we do have some resource requesting systems that will identify, you know, how we can request that type of support from the state if needed. And I don't know if that answers your question, but...
And I'll just piggyback on that. There is different protocol, mass casualty protocol, that we do have through the coroner's office and Cal OES, and so for various things that do occur. I mean, it could be a bus accident, it could be a natural disaster, it could be a fire. And so those are in place. We have mutual aid systems through the coroner's office in place, and we also have facilities that will provide, you know, basically like a portable morgue services or body storage, you know, until they can be identified.
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking about some, like, the footprint of old wildfires where there's, you know, this is obviously with a different hat on, but where I've been, you know, familiar with responses that are, you know, like an ESF-10 mission where it's like mostly looking for hazmat targets, and then, you know, there is a protocol in there for what to do if you encounter human remains, which is, are known to be some folks still unaccounted for. So I figure in a wildfire, massive flooding, you know, potentially really catastrophic earthquake, that's something that we would have the need for, so...
There is this thing called Rapid DNA. I'll put a plug in for it right now. It's very expensive, sorry, CIO, haste. But it is something that other counties do have in those type of situations, that we can rapidly test DNA and compare it to people that are, you know, lost or part of this, you know, and we can identify, you know, victims and casualties a lot sooner. They've used this in the fires in Butte County, they've used it in, I think, the vessel fire off of Santa Barbara, and some key things throughout the state, and it brought closure to families very quickly, so...
Yeah, that's important. My other question was around, I recently got to meet with some folks who are from North Coast growers Association and Humboldt Coad who are working on emergency feeding networks and protocols, and I know that you all are working with them on that, which is wonderful. And when I reviewed this, I saw a fair amount about the environmental health components and making sure food is safe, and then, you know, kind of health and human services, ensuring that people continue to have access to resources that they receive, but I thought it could help to be more explicit about supporting the emergency feeding programs and network that's evolving right now under the recovery component related to food. And I also wondered, so I'm curious your thoughts around that, and also wondered if it would be beneficial to list more community partners for potential funding reasons, or whether Humboldt Coad is an umbrella that includes, you know, enough of those community partners that we feel that that's sufficient. So just thinking about how people receive funding to do disaster response work and recovery work, I was not sure what your recommendations are around that.
So it's actually a timely question. Yesterday, we had our operational area meeting and...
That was a great presentation by him yesterday.
Yeah, absolutely. And we had North Coast Growers Association and Food For People out there representing Coad to talk about their multi-agency feeding plan, and largely what their presentation was, was a call for support, so we can better engage in that process and incorporate their current operations into current planning and be a part of that planning process. So the conversations are happening, it's just a matter of figuring out what additional partners need to be at that table and then incorporating those plans into our planning considerations.
Thank you, I'm really grateful for that, and I'm appreciative, you know, I just want to give a shout out to everyone who's working with us on that, really grateful for that, because I don't think people always realize that usually the food unit within the logistics ICS structure is to feed the responders, which is also critically important, but, and I'm sure the food unit can have other tasks, but that is really beneficial to have those partners. And, you know, if their feedback were that they could be more competitive for different types of funding by being explicitly listed, then, you know, I would say it would be beneficial to take their feedback and list them perhaps in an appendix or something like that.
No, and it's a valid question too, because, I mean, we have the initial emergency, but we also have the disaster after the disaster too. Food security is one of those things that has to be, you know, be a part of our plan, especially if we do have the big one up here, and to work with our community partners to make sure that we do have that food security, water, clean water, and storage is also, you know, great things to be a part of here. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, all the work that's gone into this. I really value that we learned a lot of lessons from the 2022 earthquake and that you've incorporated those thoughts and plans into this new document. There were a lot of things that we didn't expect, even with the disaster that happened, there were a lot of things that came up and kept coming up after that earthquake and then with the second one. And so I think it's really important that we anticipate every avenue and that we learned a lot of lessons and can incorporate them into a recovery document.
Supra's Wilson?
Thank you, Chair Bone. So I always appreciate these plans, for sure, because it helps, you know, articulate, you know, the iterative process of trying to get these things better all the time. And so I just have a, my comments are just slight, or questions are slightly tangential, and maybe the CIO can help with one of these, which is, when we had the disaster for 2020, there we spent some discretionary funds on that. And so I'm hoping that at some point we really get a, you know, like, just a memo about what those funds were able to leverage and where we could do better, or maybe, because that was unexpected for us to spend that money, which is, you know, from our general fund, on those efforts. And so do we anticipate general fund monies for future disasters as part of this? Do you see what I'm saying? So I want to make sure that we're thinking about that.
Are you talking about the million-dollar set aside for housing in Riedel?
Yes. Yes, yes. Mm-hmm. And so, I mean, so what I'm getting at is, like, we're, when these disasters happen, where, what are the other, we're talking about these external resources, and we have, you know, sort of the internal resources in terms of staff and those sorts of things, but then the funding for these sort of longer, mid- or longer-term efforts. I mean, luckily, we had a little bit of money that had come in from the COVID relief, right? And so, boop, there was a little bit there that we, and by a little bit, I mean a million dollars, that we were able to do in that moment. But that's not always going to be the case, and it certainly wouldn't be the case today. And so just checking to see if that's part of this, you know, what we're thinking about strategically.
Right. So, oh, yes, we do not have a line item for, you know, this type of activity to lend out money to the community for disaster relief, so to speak, and that's what that was, it was disaster relief. Some of the things that we do through OES, and Ryan can give you more specifics, but disaster response, you know, through a declared disaster can be something that we could seek reimbursement for, as we've seen through the weather-related emergencies that we've had, the earthquakes, when public infrastructure is damaged, and we have individual damage assessments that reach a certain limit, that we can seek a local declaration, a state, and a federal declaration. All those things can assist, you know, local entities with reimbursement. And that's the key here, because in 2022, you know, we had a lot of confusion as far as was FEMA going to come in and buy everyone a new home? Is FEMA going to fix my home? And that's not the case in these emergencies. And we, I think, as a community, we have to understand the thresholds that we have to meet in order to get a FEMA declaration, and that's in, you know, this recovery annex. And so it's easy to get a state declaration, easy to do a local declaration, so to speak, as long as we do have the damage assessments, but to get a federal declaration, it's hundreds of millions of dollars worth of damage. And so, you know, a hurricane, no problem, likely get that every single time. You know, an earthquake in LA, no problem. Earthquake up here, not so much. So that's why it's important. As far as your question, as far as providing a million dollars to the city of Riedel, you know, for their individual recovery, yeah, it's probably not going to be a part of our recommendation in the future. It is something that was set aside, I think, for that purpose, given, you know, the need at the time, but that's not a normal protocol that counties do, you know, provide that individual type of assistance.
And again, that speaks to a conversation that you and I have and others, which is I often question the OES being under the sheriff's department versus having its own, because, as many counties do, both models, because when you look at that line, that transition, there's the part where it's the emergency in the moment, and then there's that vast array of community organizations, and so we're talking about community organizing, which generally is not a law enforcement activity in general, and then you have this sort of long tail end of that as well, which, again, is not law enforcement, you know, centered. And so I just want to make sure that we keep that conversation going, because just because we do it one way today doesn't mean that's the most effective model into the future. And I know, and I appreciate the work that you do, and I appreciate the work that everyone's doing, but I want to make sure that as we broaden our understanding of emergency services and response to something that's much more than just like the immediate 24, 48 hours after an event, and trying to hold civil society together in that moment, which law enforcement is extremely valuable in that space, is it really the right institution to maintain those services into the future? And I know that this document's kind of agnostic to that, so I wanted, so I thank you for producing this document, because whatever that happens in the future, we can always have this. And then now, just to get kind of granular on something, which is, we gathered a lot of data from the 2022 earthquake, right? Did we make the same amount of effort? Do you feel like, in terms of gathering data from damages from this particular event that happened here last week, I mean, it seems like two weeks ago now or something, but I'm just kind of wondering, because I didn't see that sort of like active request for, and maybe I just didn't see it, for people to report their damages necessarily?
So we did do that. That was Thursday, and we did remind people on Friday, and Ryan can provide you the media press release that we did do. Again, we rely on our cities and our special districts to provide us really what damages to infrastructure and public buildings and those kind of things, but also, we rely on the public to provide their individual damage assessments as well. And we provided that same mechanism through... And we provided that same mechanism through our website to provide, you know, that input towards us. And so Ryan, I don't know if you wanted to...
Yeah, sure. So we do have a community forum that's still live as of today, humboldtgov.org/emergencydamageforum, and the intent with that is to acquire damage reports from residents and from businesses. We opened that again last Thursday, that'll be open probably till the end of this month. And the goal with that is to see if we can reach the threshold for federal SBA disaster relief, which is a threshold of 25 homes, 25 businesses, or a combination of the two. As of this morning, we only had 13 reports, the majority of them are minor damage, largely interior, TVs falling off of walls, appliances, that sort of thing. But I encourage residents to go and fill out that form if they had any kind of damage, specifically foundational or structural damages, what we're trying to capture with that.
That'd be great, any PSA would be good for that, because I do know even in Southern Humboldt, there were some chimneys that came down and some, you know, structural damage to some homes and potentially businesses, and I just don't know if folks were feeling like there was an avenue for them, just because they're busy cleaning up and dealing with their issues. And then the last thing was, I know you guys are kind of, I like this because it follows sort of the FEMA model, and so it's like, when people are doing stuff, it's good to follow along. It is interesting to me that the, it's sort of in the immediate needs, we talk about water, and Supervisor Madron talked about drinking water, but then, for me, it's always like slash wastewater, because when those systems also fail in a dramatic way, that it can cause those, you know, real issues to occur. And I know it's kind of in the midterm, I see it in that list, but it's not really in the short term. And to add to that, the public health part of this, which is, it has like the medical in there for the immediate, but public health is fast in terms of like, if there are issues around, well, especially if the emergency is related to, say, an outbreak of some kind, but then in terms of, you know, if our sanitation systems are down for whatever they, however they may be, that those public, that public health can be a big driver faster than one might imagine. Those are my only comments in here, because that's the things I deal with and know about, and I appreciate the work.
For sure.
And the continued conversation on this.
On that note, the eight lifelines are just buckets, and underneath each of those are components that make those up, to include public health, wastewater, there's 32, some on components that make those up, so they are covered in there.
Cool. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our chair indicated that I should just go ahead, because he was going out, but if you were next, go ahead.
Well, no, actually, I was the vice chair, so I was gonna do it.
Okay.
Do you have a comment?
I do have an additional comment.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I had made a cryptic note to myself, so I'm sorry I missed this in my first round. I just figured out what I was trying to say to myself. So I, bear with me for just a moment as I articulate this. I lived in Hurricane Katrina, you know, during the, excuse me, I lived in New Orleans during the Hurricane Katrina response, you know, both before and after the hurricane. I lived there and, you know, lived in Florida through multiple hurricanes, and I remember the feeling of unease when a lot of residents evacuated and a lot of new people who were part of the response filled the city, and how uncomfortable it was to suddenly have all my friends and neighbors and coworkers gone and have thousands upon thousands of people streaming into the community who didn't live there, and some of them were away from home and were behaving a little bit badly after hours. And, you know, I remember feeling unsafe. And then recently, when we've been entering into conversations about missing murdered indigenous people in the community, there's been a conversation around, you know, large infrastructure projects potentially bringing folks into the community, or large disasters, bringing people into the community who don't live here, who don't have connections here, and that there can be bad actors within those communities of people. And of course, there can be bad actors anywhere. But there was concern raised locally about how to plan for and train for reporting of any bad actors that are identified, and, you know, especially when we have an influx of people from out of the community, perhaps engaged in cleanup or response. Of course, we would like to think that everyone who comes here to help us is a great person, but how do you envision within the immediate response phase and the recovery phase, creating a training and a framework for people to address MMIP issues or any issues that they're identifying, while everyone's kind of distracted by this big disaster and the recovery efforts? What are your thoughts around that?
I'm going to take an initial stab and then pass it off to the sheriff. We see this a lot with wildfires, essentially, where we have, you know, cities pop up overnight with the base camps, right? And a big component of addressing what you're referring to is credentialing all of those people that come in, making sure that they're identifiable, either through their uniforms or through identification on their vehicles. But as far as public safety concerns go, reporting is a big issue. We've seen in fires in years past where you'll encounter drug problems within a fire camp, right? And unless that is reported, it can't be addressed. But if it is addressed, that can be included in safety briefs, increased patrols can occur, and it gets handled very much the same way that any call for service would, but I'm going to pass it to the sheriff.
No, exactly. So part of educating the community is being aware of the fact that there are not nice people everywhere, right? And so part of our component this next couple of years is going to be addressing labor and human trafficking within our counties, and part of that's going to be public information of what to see, what to look for, not just how not to be victimized as a potential human trafficking victim, but being aware of our surroundings and what people look like that are being trafficked, or people that are maybe grooming other people, and that kind of thing. So I think constantly educating people is a part of it. One of the things that we do do in emergencies is enhance public safety, and a part of a fire camp or a part of, you know, a disaster response is going to be safety officers, security officers, but as well as bringing in more law enforcement officers to be able to make sure that people see public safety out in our communities, people see the fact that law enforcement is there flying the flag to ensure that, you know, people's vacated homes, vacated areas, you know, are being addressed and secured, and that 911 systems are still up and running. We require people to be our eyes and ears in our community, because we can't be everywhere. And so when you see something, you need to call 911, you need to tell us about it so we can be responsive to that, as part of the education process.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I struggle to articulate exactly what that is. It's partly, you know, a concern that there could be bad actors within the response community, hopefully not, but I appreciate the credentialing idea. And then, of course, you know, when people are vacating their homes and businesses, you know, we are concerned about crime in those situations too, but thank you for addressing that. And I would hope that that would be part of the sort of list of initial actions that the safety officer would be, you know, sharing out with at briefings, and, you know, that reporting, if you see something, say something about, you know, criminal activity or behavior that just doesn't seem safe and consistent with the response would also be part of that, because it's not something I think of in a role as safety officer on other responses as, you know, that type of reporting often slips my mind, so thank you.
Yes. And another thing, as you mentioned that, talking to the people that are living here now, in the case of an emergency, what can you do to make sure you're not a victim? I mean, there are certain people that fit the criteria that, you know, would become a traffic victim, and those who we need to reach out to to make sure they don't become a victim with the new set of people. I don't think it's just emergency response, it's construction crews, it's every, I mean, yes, God, it's our neighbors, it's a tough deal, but, and I got this, and I don't know, did you get this, Mike? This is probably the most, this is absolutely, did you guys get this? Did everybody get, he sent this to everybody, I think. This is called the Rural Community Lifeline Assessment Taken the Day After, and it has, oh, probably 30 locations, it's got PG&E, the Fire District, Cal OES, the County Office of Education, it's got water districts, it's got breakdowns who's open or closed. This was put together by Neil Euler, is Neil here? Yeah, this thing is absolutely, all the questions you're asking about, all the things you want to know, it's all right here.
So it's an important document, obviously, that OES does do and provides to our operational area to ensure that all those things are, information we can push out to our...
It's a one-stop shop, if you want to find out. I wonder how ORIC did water system, and it says it, and things like that. So I used it quite a bit, so I appreciate that coming out as soon as it did. And then I know we talked about a little bit, and I'm just going to get a hit on it right now, about separating OES and the Sheriff's Department. It's, we want to say it's law enforcement, but it's not law enforcement, it's public safety. They work together in such a tandem, and then as what the Sheriff's Department picks up, it almost has to be in tandem in a small rural county, because I don't think they could have mobilized and did everything they did with the five people they have downstairs, even as amazing as they are. It's just, usually there's about 15 bay shirts down there with them and taking things out. So I think in some locations, I think that's fine. In rural areas, you find yourself with the OES, the coroner, all underneath one hat. So just financially, it works out better for us, and I think by the signs of this recovery on Wednesday, or Thursday, and what took place, I did pretty well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I appreciate the part that Mike mentioned about how wastewater systems are also a piece to this, in particular when people are on mound systems, right, where you have to pump the sewage, or it builds up in the tank. And at an individual household, that's rarely a problem for a number of days, because the capacity, I mean, it depends on how recently the pump kicked in, but on larger systems, like in Trinidad, there is a trailer park there just to the east of the freeway that is on a mound system. And when the freezing temperatures happened a couple of winters ago, down to 20-some degrees here on the coast, electricity went out for a couple of weeks, and it really gets to be a real serious health hazard. I will commend Connie Beck and her staff for coming in and bringing hot dogs and all kinds of food and supplies for people to stay warm and fed during that outage. Thank you, Connie, that was quite a response by DHHS. But just, it's something that we could identify ahead of time, you know, where are these systems that are supporting numerous trailers or households and stuff as being a vulnerable population when the electricity goes out? So appreciated that comment.
All right. I will open this up to public comment. Seeing none? Good?
I will motion to file and receive the report.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Chair Bone?
Please.
Supervisor Wilson?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, appreciate the time today.
Close session, do you want to read close session?
Thank you, Chair Bone. It is the intention of the Board to meet in close session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6 in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators. It is also the intention of the Board to meet in close session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Christopher Mitchell versus County of Humboldt, case number 3:24-CV-03845-RFL; UROC Indian Housing Authority versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2401392; John Forrest versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2301916; and City of Arcata versus A.O. Kariki, Ben Tutt, Malik Silkus et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2401719.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will adjourn to close session immediately.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bushnell. There was no reportable action with regards to items G4 through G7.
Thank you, we're adjourned.